Everybody's good? We are now, did I hear a ding? 8.2 Land Development Task Force. We have Counselor Ferguson.
So just one question, I guess, to John or to Jason. I see what you're trying to do in this report. The single biggest complaint I get in my office, and I got two just sitting here today in this meeting, is the amount of time it takes to respond to applications. Is this going to add another layer of bureaucracy? We now have another commenting agencies, agency on rezoning and official plan amendments. I'm just worried that we're so slow now, that it's a perception as we're very slow, and this is not one more group the planner's going to have to wait for in order to issue his report to the planning committee. Through you, I guess, to Jason, maybe the better person.
Yes, and through the chair. No, it's not. This wouldn't be a commenting group for planning approvals, so we wouldn't be taking specific planning applications through this, through this body. So, no, we're not.
So this is global work you're going to do with this committee? Citywide modeling? Jason, or to John, it doesn't matter, but everyone?
Yes, through the chair, that's correct. It's, the intent is that it would be to isolate more complex, higher urgency projects that would not generally fit into the, I'll say, the day-to-day operations, and to try to elevate that and bring focus to it to actually achieve it in a more timely fashion than would otherwise be possible.
Okay, thank you.
We have Mayor Eisenberger.
Yes, and I want to thank staff for the report. We'd, Counselor Jackson, and I actually moved the motion quite some time ago to ask our staff to review this, and I have to admit that it fell out of certainly my desire to have a arms-length development corporation that was free to do not something off the corner of their desk, but to move forward on projects that, you know, are difficult to do when it's kind of embedded in all of our departmental staffs. However, I'm convinced that as a first step, I think it's the right step to take to create a staff group that will do that. So some of the major projects that we might have in our community that needs a, you know, a centralized and centralized focus really requires, I think, an organization or a structure that will allow them to do that and move those projects forward. And I think one of the challenges has always been that it bounces from one department to another and never really has kind of centralized focus on some of those major issues. So I'm very pleased to see this report. I think it's the right step to take. I'm, I think I'm seeing that there is no additional staff complement other than a manager. So you talked about a manager, John, that, that will be put forward into the 2017 budget process, as I understand it. Through the chair, John, could you just kind of cover that a little bit to make sure that we're aware of what might be coming?
Thank you for the question. And through the chair, we've tried very hard to make sure, excuse me, that this was not incremental funding or staffing. So the one position that we did want to make sure was a dedicated position was a, I'll call it a program manager, and that would be someone that we would recruit from the existing staff complement, and we would pay initially, as Jason's offered up, a little arm twisting, that he would pay for that position out of his current budget in 2016, and we would pay for that position out of incremental revenues that are derived through the project in '17 and beyond. And it would not be set up as a permanent FTE as much as it would be a contract opportunity for an existing staff person to take on that responsibility.
All right, thank you for that. I mean, I think it's critically important that someone has ownership of this. That's really the key issue, someone that gets up every morning and thinks about those kind of high-level projects that need that kind of glue to bring them together and bring them to fruition. So that's that person, correct?
Through the chair, that is correct.
Okay. And so, and then in terms of what this group reports to, I mean, is it a presumption that they report to planning or to GIC, or what was the recommendation, I don't recall?
Through the chair, the current recommendation is that it would report through a director that could potentially be me, and in turn through to the city manager's office, and that the liaison responsibility of the director and program manager would be to go across, depending on the project, all relevant departments, critically, certainly planning and active, with all of the key members who've contributed to this, certainly facilities, legal services, et cetera. So we would essentially act as a coordinating group with dedication through the program manager and a good chunk of my time also to bring all of these pieces together.
Okay. So I'm thinking more, and I appreciate Chris's hand up. So Chris, through the chair.
Yeah, just, I guess, to your specific question, I see most of this coming through GIC because of the interdepartmental nature of it.
So I didn't, I didn't see that in the report initially, and I think maybe we ought to include that, sorry? Is that item G? If it is, then that's fine, and I apologize. So reporting then to GIC would make perfect sense, and then obviously regular updates in terms of successes would also be helpful as we roll forward. So I'm very pleased with this report. I think it really gets us moving in the right direction on some of those major issues that require, I think, significant focus and attention. So this will allow us to do that. And so, thank you, John, for all this great work, and I anticipate continued good work going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have Counselor Jackson.
Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So I'm pleased, John Hurtel, to see that, again, the agency and the Land Development Corporation separately went by the wayside, and this will be more of an internal staff team. I think of the Hamilton Realty Capital Corporation and the lack of success there in the arms-length distance that basically didn't allow council to even have some representation on it. So I'm glad this is internal. Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to John Hurtel. John, when I supported this with the mayor, and I'm still supportive in light of what you got here before us, but I thought it was more focused on vacant land, underutilized land in our, in our city that nobody really was getting a good handle on. I can understand the mandate may be stretching beyond that to coordination, but I thought the targeting of this new task force was underutilized land, vacant land, and more emphasis and energy on it. Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to John, did I miss something?
Through the chair, no. In fact, Counselor Jackson, that would be one of the primary mandates of the group. One of the starting points of the work sort of over the next few months would be to have a very specific look at the approximately 2,000 properties that the city owns and try to look at those under different lenses. Some might be for disposition, therefore revenue generation, et cetera. And I guess what was interesting mostly to me as we had the individual conversations with each of the ward counselors and the mayor was, I'll describe it as, the creativity that came from each ward in terms of potential. And it was, you know, it's an overused phrase maybe, but city building, but it was really a creative use of properties that we had either for disposition or more creatively to even look at things like intensification, where we might even have properties that had existing assets on them, but there was still some spare capacity on the property, whether it be to, you know, add a seniors building or geared to income housing. An amazing array of suggestions. And the notion would be that we would look over the next few months at all of those pieces under different lenses and come back to you before the end of the year with a very detailed work plan that identified those priorities. One of the things also, if I may add, is that we don't want to duplicate or replicate any existing work that's going on. So whether it's, you know, Neil's group, you know, Ray Kessler, all the folks who are doing great work, we really just want to work collaboratively across the corporation to say, well, how could we put a lens and perhaps a spotlight on certain pieces that are either, you know, extremely complex, they cross several boundaries that would otherwise kind of get lost in the shuffle, or when a suggestion comes forward from one of the ward counselors on an innovative approach to something, that we can be that kind of front-end filter that says, you know, that, that fits nicely over here, or over here, over here, or it's actually an individual piece of a larger puzzle.
Okay, so thanks, John. You, I appreciate that explanation because you kind of anticipated my subsequent question, which was basically, for example, the waterfront. We've got a waterfront subcommittee, we've got a waterfront office, if you will, we've got staff kind of, you know, all wanting to do great things at the waterfront. We've got a wonderful waterfront trust with a great 16-year history as a development arm. And so I just got a little bit worried in terms of redundant overlap, tripping over other initiatives that are being done, but your answer kind of covered that off for me, so I appreciate that, John. And the D part, John, it's locked in that you say any new incremental staff, Mr. Deputy Mayor, will only be funded when new revenue is generated. I just don't want anything creeping in that allows this task force to get larger without any warranted or necessity, and so I really, I would prefer D wouldn't be in there, but you've couched it by saying only when new revenue is generated. And so that'll be, if you will, the honor system, John, that unless there is new revenue generated by this task force with projects, that there won't be any increased incremental staff. Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to John for that assurance.
Thank you. And through the chair, that's a great way to phrase the question as well, because it certainly is our intent to leverage existing staff assets. And if we get to a point where we feel that some change is needed in the model, we would be coming back to committee to present that as a recommendation and get your support.
Thanks so much, John. Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I'm more than happy to continue to support this under Report 8.2. And I will repeat that. Thank you again very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I've completed my questions and my comments. Thank you very much. I'm still willing to support this matter with those assurances. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Appreciate your input, Counselor Jackson, and we always listen with interest to your very valid points. Only to be buttressed by the next speaker, Counselor Collins.
Thanks. And, Mr. Chairman, I just want to be recorded as opposed to B and C. I really don't think that there's a need or position. I like the concept in terms of bringing a group together and signing the work to a specific group, clearly understand what the goal is or the objective is with certain properties, but there's really no need to add an additional position to manage this. And for as much as it's going to be funded through the process, the sales, and, you know, it looks like it's temporary, invariably many, many times, you know, these become permanent and permanently part of the bureaucracy. So I like the concept, I like the task force. It's one that's worked ad hoc in the past, so to make it permanent across the organization, I think, is a good thing, but an additional position really isn't needed. Please record me as opposed to B and C.
Okay. We will do that. We have it moved by Mayor Eisenberger, seconded by Counselor Jackson, who's been very magnanimous on this one. Counselor Jackson's got the second. Sorry, Counselor Partridge, you're up.
That's okay, it's on the floor now, so.
It is.
Yeah, 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 so that's okay. So to follow up on Counselor Collins' point, through you to staff, without hiring or assigning a manager to this, how would this be handled internally? Because I think it's a very valid point. Through you to Mr. Hurtel, please.
Yes, thank you. And through the chair, as we entered the discussions around this, I guess, on one hand, we were looking at how could we address the really key issue that Mayor Eisenberger had identified in terms of how do we bring focus to something like this? Because everybody's busy and, you know, one more thing off the corner of their desk may not add value. So we went at it with the notion of trying to understand what would be the right model. It was, you know, very strongly supported, A, that it should be internal and just reassigning work efforts. So following that through and trying to get the idea of at least, you know, one person and the whole project being full-time, but taking that person and the funding from existing sources, we came with the notion that a program manager would be critical to try to help to glue together all of the activities, working with myself and other individuals, to make that all come in a very focused way and a timely way.
Okay, and thank you for that answer. Similarly, I like the concept, and I think it's a very worthy task force to have set up within, within our corporation. But could someone explain to me, please, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, explain to me the difference between our, what this is proposing and our current open-for-business and business facilitators? And could it not be handled under that same umbrella?
If I could defer that to Jason.
Yes, please.
Yes, through the chair, they are very different types of work and types of skill sets. So if you look at the business facilitators, they're very focused on outside applicants and facilitating outside applicants' businesses, developers, or whoever they may be, people looking to get approvals for non-residential development. Those are the kinds of things that we hand off to the business facilitators to shepherd stuff through the developments approvals process. This task force is very much focused on real estate transactions, so it's a very different skill set. It's the piece of work that's typically handled through the real estate section of economic development, as opposed to the business facilitators who are sitting in planning and focused on the approvals process. So really, it is quite a different role and skill set compared to what those business facilitators do.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. And so, just, just to help me get my head around this now, this is not something that our real estate division could handle, and why is that?
Through the chair, and John can add, that's something we looked at as to how we could, how we could handle that, if we handled in the existing real estate section. The reason we're not creating an additional FTE, because there is some, there is some funding capacity and capacity to have a contract position, manage this work, which is, which otherwise, to answer your question about how else would it be get done if it's just on existing desks? Each of these projects and priorities will be kind of be carved up and put onto the corners of multiple people's desks. The concern with that approach is that to make sure these projects are getting the attention they deserve is to have someone who sort of gets up every day just focused on these, I guess I would call them longer-range strategic initiatives, whereas the real estate section tends to get very, very busy dealing with the day-to-day, the transactional, and the longer-range strategic stuff tends to get a little bit pushed off. And so the idea here was how can we have someone whose sole job is just dealing with these sorts of things and aren't getting distracted by the, by the day-to-day?
All right. And so, one last question, just to clarify. So in, in looking at creating this model, did we also look at ways to recognize or to realize, I should say, is the word I'm looking for, efficiencies within the real estate and the planning to see if we could accommodate it within that? I just want to make sure that, that we have looked at it from every angle.
So through the chair, and again, John can elaborate, but I think we have, and I think that's where we're able to identify that with, with existing funding sources and with, with a contract position, we could, we could make this work happen, really by kind of rebalancing the workloads of some of the existing real estate staff.
Okay, John, did you want to add to that?
I would, through the chair, just add that an awful lot of my time has been a learning mission through this exercise and spending the vast majority of that time with, in fact, Jason and his real estate team. And it became evident, more based on the inputs I was receiving from those who are, I'll say, charged with that responsibility today, that this would be an avenue to move forward, as Jason describes, at the more proactive, strategic projects that they're just not able to get at today because of the way that the work is somewhat carved up, I'll say, in transactional pieces, as Jason outlined.
And one last question. Is Jason, in your answer, I think you just spurred on another question for me. Did I, did I hear you say this is a contract position?
Yes, so through the chair, so the, yes, so recommendation B is to fill this as a contract position for a period of, of up to three years is what recommendation B would be. So it would be a contract position funded through some of the revenues, ultimately funded through the revenues that we generated by the, by the work that this individual would do.
Okay, so is that going to be evaluated after six months, after one year? Because I think it's important that we do have that written into the recommendation.
Yes, and through the chair, if I may answer that one. One of the things that we've put into our recommendations is that we would report back to GIC every six months. We wanted to have that very specific commitment to you for all of the reasons that you're outlining. We're kind of heading into something that feels logical, sounds logical, and, yeah, at the same time, there are many unknowns. So as we're building the work plan over the next, the very detailed work plan over the next few months, plus doing a number of projects, I'll say, in parallel, we want to make sure we have checkpoints in place that all of you around the horseshoe are very comfortable that we're heading in the right direction, that it is the way to go. And the notion of, of the contract person was to recruit from within the organization, of course, through an expression of interest in the position.
So you've just answered my last question, which was, are we doing internal or external for this position? So as I understand it, but it does have a three-year limit on it, and it is on contract.
That is correct. Through the chair, we, we see it as a great development opportunity for an individual to move in, and at the same time, I think it would be unfair to ask the individual to commit longer than three years at this point in time. But to your comments earlier, as we learn and move forward on this, if there was to be a change in that recommendation, it would certainly come back to this table.
All right, thank you.
We now have Counselor Whitehead.
Thank you. I, it's always leery when we're looking at, I mean, you're not calling an FT, but in essence, that's, that's the effect that it is, whether it's a contract person utilizing whatever resources, little resources we have on this job. So first of all, I support everything in the report, except I'm having real struggle again, yet again, hiring yet another person when you look at the expertise we have around the table. So here's, here's the concern. I just heard that, well, you know, we don't want it shoved off in a corner, but yet, every application for development, commercial or otherwise, that's exactly what we do. They go through a process, they have an intake, and there's a number of people with expertise that look at those applications, make comment on those applications, and those applications get processed. So if I'm hearing now that you need individual people, so it's not on a corner to run the whole thing, then help me understand why don't we change the whole planning process then?
Through the chair, so the individuals we're talking about aren't involved in the planning approvals, in a very limited way, in that some of the individuals over the real estate section will be involved with parkland dedication calculations or, or some aspects like that. So it really is quite separate from the planning approvals process. This is the, you know, this is the section that is dealing with any sort of acquisitions, where there are real estate transactions that come out of development applications, they'll be involved in those sorts of things. So it really is quite a different role than what, what folks do in the planning approvals. So the corner-of-the-desk stuff that I was talking about was more the corner of the desk, or, sorry, the, the day-to-day operational stuff I was talking about was the day-to-day operational stuff they do related to real estate transactions, less so related to planning approvals.
So I was just using that as an analogy, that we already have these processes in place, and if they're not working, then, I mean, I've been sitting in the open for business, and I haven't, I heard we got a lot better actually at it. So we got an excellent individual who made a presentation earlier today, and I think he's an incredible individual on these special type of projects. And I'm not sure if we've really explored his capacity, what he's currently doing, whether this, I think it's a synergy dovetails very nicely with this individual. I don't know if I should say his name because I'm identifying an individual, but he did present earlier today, and he is a guy that understands portfolios. Paul Calcedo, Guy Paparala does it, in fact, does incredible job on these kind of files. And I think it's a natural synergy, natural synergy for him to be doing this kind of work, because it's a type of work he's sort of been doing for a long, long time, and he's probably one of the best at it in regards to people within our, within the corporation. So I don't know what his capacity is. I don't know if we've entertained and had that discussion with him, but I can't think of a better person to head that type of thing up, based on his background and experience.
I, I don't know if we're going to get into the space of HR at this particular moment.
Well, again, I'm just looking to turn every stone to try and, even if we have incentives to, like, add additional pay to the guy to take this additional responsibility, that could be a consideration.
I would just, at this time, not ask that staff respond to that, because we're in this presentation. I hope you understand why, Counselor Whitehead, don't want to put staff in an awkward situation as it relates to HR. But certainly on the motion, which is on the floor, if there's more that's there, happy to.
The point is, have we exhausted, have we really exhausted the look without going to a contract?
Mr. Mayor.
This is a real point.
So through you, Deputy Mayor, and, you know, there's no question, Guy has been here for a long time, incredibly talented. So in terms of that particular idea, certainly that's been contemplated, but there is a report that's going to be coming back in the next month or so that speaks to some very broad needs that we have around this table in terms of our next development charges report, that we need to be preparing background studies for and coordination of that work. And I would say Mr. Paparala's talents would be very much in line with the coordination of the major studies that we've got to update to support that DC background study, and it's a role that he's, he's played in part before. So, I mean, if we're going to get into, you know, making sure that we make best use of all of our resources, you're asking absolutely important questions. And in this particular case, I would say that we have some fairly incredible work ahead of us that a person of Guy's years and talent will be much better aligned to.
I appreciate that answer, and I think I'm glad that we recognize some of the skills we have, such as Guy, because I think he's done an incredible job. I still think, if we really think this is a priority as a triage over and above the development charge issue, then I hope that we weigh those two things in regards to the type of skill set that we're going to put into that particular position. Thank you.
Okay. On the first-time speakers list, we have Counselors Ferguson and Farr, and on the second time, Mayor Eisenberger.
Thank you.
Counselor Johnson, I apologize, and I will take you at your word. Or, are you sure?
I'll defer to Counselor Johnson.
That is, that is, thank you very much, Counselor Ferguson. Very kind of you. Counselor Johnson, I apologize. I might have, in the dinging of glasses, attributed your ding to Ferguson's ding. Well, I thought you were just waving to me. That's okay. Okay, so the floor is yours. I thought you were just saying hi.
I'll say hi later. Through you, Chair, to, to John, a lot of my questions have been answered, because I too have some concerns about hiring for another position. And when you, when you speak about, we have all these files and they're on everybody else's desk, we just want to centralize persons, so we're going internally, can you describe to me, if I'm working and I apply for that job, I get that job, does my job now become vacant, or does my responsibilities get distributed amongst the others that are in the, the department?
Through the chair, yes, our first step was that we, we wanted to do an expression of interest, and depending on where that individual, the successful candidate, may come forward, it could in fact lead to a hall, let's say, where they are currently, and we would look to work with that division, department, et cetera, to try to find a way to help alleviate that pressure back in that group.
Okay, thank you. And why isn't this not coming with the budget deliberations? I get that the funding is a little different, but whenever we see, whenever I see, we're hiring someone in between that budgeting process, red flags go up a little bit, because we don't seem to scrutinize it as much as when we're in the budget, where we can take a look at the whole department, figure out how it all works. So why did this have to, is there an urgency to this? It couldn't wait until the budget process?
Through the chair, it was quite simply just trying to get a very timely response back to the mayor's motion, based literally on the sense of urgency that we interpreted, right or wrong, to get this in place so that by the end of this year, we would have had an opportunity to review in detail the 2,000 properties the city owns under different lenses. We would be able to assess, for example, there was a motion a little while back from Counselor Marula on the City Hall precinct, to be able to get moving forward on that, with a lot of the input from Counselor Collins as associated with the, that there may be projects that are, I'll say, ripe for us to assist with, to help drive through. So it was really only around the timing.
Okay, so if there's no such urgency at the moment, it's just that, because every six months, we have certain projects that come through anyhow. six months, we have certain projects that come through anyhow. I too really have some issues with hiring, even if it's internally. We're going to hire internally, that vacates somebody's position, and then you have to figure out who's going to take on their responsibilities. So if it's, if there's enough, if you will, room in a certain department where you can alleviate someone from a position and distribute the rest of their responsibilities, then I think that's the more prudent way to go. But, and from what I understand, we have a number of individuals in this city that are quote-unquote "special projects." So I just think that, as said before, we have a lot of resources in here. I don't, I think we need to exhaust that first before you ask for any additional funding for.
Thank you, Counselor Ferguson.
And through you to Jason. I've been listening to the discussion, and I thought when I first asked my question, it was about planning process. You say it's not. It's about disposal of property or acquiring other properties. Isn't that the job of the real estate department? And quite frankly, I think, ah, we have five sales tonight on the agenda, acquisitions. So isn't that exactly what they do?
Through the chair, it is. I think where the capacity issue comes into play is that what we've talked about, frankly, for a while in the real estate section, and then with the mayor's motion as well, is that the sort of strategic, longer-term projects that come up from time to time, for example, you know, the discussion around looking at the City Hall, the property behind City Hall, you know, the issue of the, we've got 2,000 city properties out there, are there some out there that we could, we could sell now for, to generate some revenue, sell them proactively, not wait for someone to come knocking on our door, but actually screen through them and put some of them on the market now? We also want to respond to the motions related to affordable housing. Are there some parcels that we can actually potentially merge, assemble, create some potential opportunities for some affordable housing, and put those on the market? That kind of, that kind of proactive work is the stuff that tends to get shuffled to the side of the desk to deal with the immediate pressures. So the idea of looking at the special project manager, program managers, to have someone who specifically just looks at these strategic priorities, and that's all they do. They aren't also dealing with the day-to-day transactional pressures that are on the current staff of the real estate section. Through the chair, certainly looking at the 2,000 property inventory, as well as a couple of the special projects that are identified here, I think there is definitely a full-time job that comes out of that.
Okay. Counselor Ferguson.
Yeah, I'm just having trouble with this, and the more I listen. I'm with Counselor Collins, I can't support hiring of a new full-time person.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Farr.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm confident that people like me will less pester people like Jason Thorne and John and others up there when it comes to motion from three and a half, four years ago with the repurposing of parking lots prior to your motion that says, let's put all of this 2,000-plus assets under one umbrella and create this task force. So I'm still very supportive of that, while I do very much appreciate the questions on, do we really need this PM? So what I see here in the recommendation is a PM where we pay out of a planning and active budget, four months' salary, and then after that, we pay out of the revenues generated. Through you to Chris Murray. I'll go to Chris Murray with this question. Is this simple? Are you feeling as confident as I am, or do you have any reservations whatsoever that when we look at the 2,000 properties, in fact, don't even look at the 2,000, let's just look at the underutilized city properties like 17 surface parking lots in downtown Hamilton, where after three and a half, four years of pestering, we're well underway to at least adaptably reusing one and thus profiting from the sale of it? Are you feeling any reservations at all that will not be successful in funding this PM position, 2017 and beyond? Chris Murray.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I have no reservations.
Therein lies our issue. We're worried that this program manager, project manager position ends up being a levy-based formula. Folks, we've got over 2,000 properties. We have a ton of underutilized but highly desirable land that we could sell, that can be developed privately, and just from one alone in the downtown that I can think of, this salary is taken care of for, forget two years or three years, probably for five or six. So I'm hopeful that we can kind of factor that in, have the confidence in the current real estate market, have the confidence in staff and the direction that they've created, and in this idea of a task force that expediates things like the ideas that come from this table about underutilized parking lots, about City Hall development and around City Hall, and so many other great ideas that come from across the city. So I'm going to maintain my support for the entire recommendation.
Thank you. Further speaker is me. I don't know who to throw the chair to, but.
Counselor Ferguson.
Counselor Ferguson, you've got the chair. So I just want to hearken back to, you know, previous successes in the energy reduction team. You know, we created an energy reduction team because we understood that trying to get energy reduction happening in all of the corporations of the City Hall, it was going to be difficult to do department by department. So we created a team, and the team has been operating, I think, now for some seven or eight years, all of it funded through revenues or cost reductions that they generate. So no tax, no tax levy input, all funded through the cost reductions that they've been able to engineer through the group, the focus group that they have, all dedicated to that one specific issue. I think that's the model, and I think the model is being translated here. If we do it in the absence of somebody being the point person on this, then I don't see any reason to do this, quite frankly. Then we'll just go back to real estate division, planning division, do what you do, and we'll see, we'll just struggle along the way we are now. The whole idea was to put a focus on this. So it really requires an individual to be that primary focus, and the intent is to have it come out of revenues generated out of the work that they do. I have no doubt that that's going to happen, as Chris Murray does, and I'm sure John Rattell and others do, that we would have no difficulty finding the right, more than enough revenue to be able to cover this and then sell. And so the revenue will be to the benefit of the greater corporation of the City of Hamilton, I have no doubt. So I would hope that we do this, do this as it stands today. And you know what? Six months from now, we're going to get a report back. We'll have an understanding of how that's all playing out, and if it's not playing out the way it should, I'm sure John and others will be the first to say, this is not, this is not the vision that we set out to do, and it's not achieving the results that we're looking to achieve. So I hope that council supports this, that we can move forward on this. I have no doubt it's going to be successful, and I ask you to support this. And I'll call the question.
Okay. And I don't believe we have any other speakers, although, Mr. Mayor, I think you would know that, being the chair before I took it over. So no more speakers? Yep, there is. No more speakers, okay. So the motion is before you, and so we'll put the question, all in favor?
Opposed.
Opposed? I'm opposed to A, B, and C. Care of the vote again, all in favor? Stand. Standing, recorded then. All in favor? A, B, and C.
C and D.
A, B, and C. Madam Clerk, do you remember what it was, sir?
I believe, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I believe Counselor Collins was opposed to be in C, and I'm not certain I need for you, B, C, and D, or just C and D?
B and C is fine with me. Okay, just on B and C then. I think, I don't see any objection to the others. So all in favor of B and C, your standing recorded vote.
Counselor A Johnson, Counselor Farr, Counselor Marula, Counselor Jackson, Mayor Eisenberger, and person, those opposed.
Through Mr. Deputy Mayor, it was defeated, seven to six.
We'll move on then to item 8.3. I thought every move was fine with the balance of the report. Counselor Collins, you got the.
Sorry, I think we should give direction in terms of how that would proceed then, without the staff could report back on the balance of this being supported with how the model would function.
Report back now or in the future?
In the future.
In the future. Now, is that okay?
Yes, we'll regroup and see if we can't come up with a creative way to move ahead.
Okay.